Good evening and welcome to tonight's regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. Just for the audience and the public to know, we will have our regular agenda, if you want to call it that, and at the end of our agenda, we will hear from Mr. Dave Peterson, our consultant and search firm consultant on the new superintendent search, on all the community feedback from the focus groups that we've heard, on what people want to see in the characteristics they want to see in the next superintendent. So for those of you watching, that will be at the end of the agenda. That said, let's, anybody who has cell phones, please turn them off so we don't get the reverb back through the RF. And with that, I'll ask the secretary to call the roll.
President Wasserman?
Here.
Vice President Baker?
Here.
Secretary Kaminsky?
Here.
Treasurer Branstad?
Here.
Member Gordon?
Here.
Member McFarland?
Here.
Member Vanderkellen?
Here.
We're all here?
All present accounted for. The first item we'll move into is our consent agenda. I'll take a motion on the consent agenda, then we can discuss additions or deletions.
So move.
Support.
Move by Dr. Kaminsky and supported by Ms. Branstad. Any additions, deletions, or corrections or clarifications? I'll take silence as none. Close the discussion. All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move into requests to address the board. We have no formal pre-requests. Anybody in the audience tonight wish to address the board? Seeing none, we will move into Board of Education matters and presentations of the board, and I'll turn it over to Carl.
Yes, I'd recommend that you take a look at Agenda Item 4.1 and consider approval of A, B, and C, all in one motion. And I'll review all three of them. If you want to do it differently, feel free to let us know. We're talking about approval of capital project bids. The board has previously approved, back when you approved any sinking fund work law that was due to be done this summer from the sinking fund dollars that are left over. We always bring a recommendation for capital projects at the same time. And bids have been accepted and a tabulation has been provided for the board for asbestos abatement. This is item number eight. The work to be performed includes abatement of floor tile at Dow High School. The project is scheduled to be completed prior to the start of the school year this coming fall. We recommend issuing a purchase order to the low bidder Trust Thermal of Owasso, Michigan, for the amount of $15,150. As I mentioned, the project is part of the previously approved 2013 capital projects by the Board of Education, and funding was included in the 2013 capital projects. Item bid follows the same process, or Item B. Bids have been accepted and a tabulation provided for the board for district floor tile replacement. That work is to be performed, and it includes replacement of the floor tile, carpeting, and vinyl base in the main office areas and classrooms at Dow High School. Again, work to be completed prior to the start of the 2013-14 school year. Administration recommends issuing a purchase order to the low bidder Northeastern Paint and Flooring of Saginaw, Michigan, for the amount of $16,908. Again, previously approved and funding included in the 13 capital projects budget. Item C, bids have been accepted and a tab provided for district parking lot crack ceiling. The work is to be performed, ceiling, I should say, S-E-A-L-I-N-G. The work to be performed includes asphalt parking lot and drive crack ceiling at both high school building sites. Again, work to be completed before the fall, following the same process as the previous two. We would recommend issuing a purchase order to the low bidder Highway Maintenance Construction of Romulus, Michigan, for the amount of $17,252.
Board's pleasure, I'll accept the motion for 4.1, A, B, and C?
Move to-
Or A, B, or C?
I'll move to approve the capital bids, A, B, and C.
A, or A, B, and C, okay. Move by Member McFarland and supported by Member Treasurer, I'm sorry, Treasurer Branstad. Any discussion or questions?
I did have a question. The list that we held off on for sinking fund projects, this was or was not part of that?
No, this, I don't believe, now, Mr. Costas is here. I don't believe we planned on using sinking fund dollars. There were some things that didn't get accomplished when we pulled back.
Right, right.
Dr. Kaminsky?
Yep.
Assuming that we would have a successful May 7th election, we would insert those projects into the next 10-year period.
That was my question, yep. Those are, those won't be started until after we know certain our funding and-
At this point in time, that's true.
Okay, real good. Good questions. Any more?
Are the teachers and the students having any input on the design for the new carpet and flooring?
I can't really answer that. Mr. Costas, you want to step up and, I think we've reached out to the administration, but we'll let the guy that really knows answer that question.
I don't know. The school principal, I talked to the school principal who collects the, gets the inform, you know, the, but we really kept the tile consistent with the colors that we've been putting in Dow High. In this case, it's all at Dow High, and it's a color we've been using throughout, so there's a little bit of carpeting in the office, and the office people, including the principal, selected the color which is real similar to what they had, which is green.
Okay.
What a surprise.
Surprise, surprise.
All right.
But the tile pretty much matches, but it's there.
Okay. Any other questions? That said, we'll move into a vote on 4.1, A, B, and C inclusive. I'll take a roll call vote, John.
Okay, sure. President Wasserman?
Yes.
Vice President Baker?
Yes.
Myself, Secretary Kaminsky, yes. Treasurer Branstad?
Yes.
Member Gordon?
Yes.
Member McFarland?
Yes.
And Member Vanderkellen?
Yes.
Okay.
Seven omen.
For motion.
Okay, unanimous. We'll then move into the finance portion, and the first thing we have on the agenda is the FFO study committee minutes from about a week ago, and I'll hand it over to Treasurer Branstad.
All right, we met last Tuesday night, and we had many things on the agenda. We had a dis- I don't know if I can say that down here. All right, we started out discussing the fact that we have a trust agreement with Chemical Bank and Trust to handle funds that have been donated to the district to provide scholarships for students. In practice, the funds have been handled as a custodial account rather than a trust, since state law limits the investment option for schools. So to more accurately reflect how the account is handled and to avoid trust management fees, we are going to ask the district's attorney to draft an agreement releasing the assets from the trust, but leaving them in the custody of Chemical Bank. We had a lot of discussion about workers' compensation expenses and have decided to continue being self-funded. Let's see, we looked at the latest proposals from the five firms that we had previously requested audit requests for proposals from, and knowing that we have our May 7th election, we had gone back to each one of them and asked them to please update their proposals to us. And so we are going to, I think, is it later that we're recommending tonight who to go with? Cynthia Marquisi joined us and talked about negotiations with the Midland City Education Support Personnel Association. We talked about some election-related issues, one being that during the past sinking fund, we worked with Woolgrass Construction and Integrated Designs Incorporated for construction management and architectural services. And although both provided excellent service to the district, we felt it was good business practice that if the sinking fund ballot is successful, that we will issue a request for proposal for each. And we will be prepared to do that very shortly after the May 7th election. We also talked about the district had an opportunity to avoid the cost of using an underwriter to sell the bonds by selling directly to a local bank. So doing so may change the number of issues from two to three, but it won't change the overall length of time required to fully repay the bonds. And the first issue will be sold by June 30th, 2013, will be repaid within eight years, and the final issue will be sold by May of 2018 and will be repaid by 2025. And the intention of that was it would actually save the district money or put more of that money back into our hands that we can use for our students. A group representing high school-level travel baseball teams has approached us about raising funds to improve the baseball field at Dow High School. Doing so would allow the group to bring large baseball tournaments to the community during the summer. There are many details to settle, but we, the district is supportive of efforts to improve them, so Mrs. Klein is going to work with the athletic directors and the maintenance staff to further investigate this offer. I think they wanted to use both of our baseball fields. Dow High was the one they deemed to not be acceptable at this time for what they wanted to use it for. Mrs. Klein presented a proposal for addressing the problems caused by a shortage of substitute bus drivers. Since it would require a change to Appendix D of how Midland schools work, the next step will be to review it with Human Resources Study Committee. Mr. Ellinger gave an update on the progress of negotiating in a contract with Senator Gistic. If we are unable to resolve an issue regarding the hiring of the energy specialist, we may not proceed with signing the contract. And since the three of us were scheduled to meet with the superintendent search consultant that evening, we had limited time to discuss the 2013 budget, but there was a general agreement that moving the budget workshop till after the election would allow the board to consider a less speculative document while still providing administration adequate time to prepare the final draft. And the next time we will be meeting will be on, at four o'clock on Tuesday, May 7th, Election Day.
I'll open up to question or comment, but I'd just like to, for abundance of clarity, FFO has not made a decision, because we can't make decisions on insurance carriers or RFPs. We are making recommendations to the full board, recommendations to the full board for a vote will be coming at future meetings. And any other questions or comment? Carl, do you want to comment on the budget workshop timing at this time?
I can. I think Mrs. Young sent an email out to all of you, and the intent would be to cancel the budget workshop that was scheduled, I believe, the afternoon of the 29th, from 3:00 to 5:00. Instead, move the budget workshop to May the 13th. The time, I think, is in the agenda here, if I recall. Oh, it's not. And I think that email said, you got to refresh my memory, 4:00 to 6:00. Then there would be a break time, and we would have our regularly scheduled meeting on the 13th from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. And then instead, coming back to the 29th, there would be a closed session meeting for the board, I think, from 3:00 to 5:00, related to the superintendent search.
Yeah, we're basically recommending we take the time that was allotted to do the budget workshop-
Yes.
-to be the time to do the closed session portion of the superintendent search. And that will make for a little earlier evening on Monday night, since people were coming here at that time, already previously scheduled to come at that time. The new add to your calendar would be the May 13th, 4:00 to 6:00 budget workshop. And the new deletion would be that the April 29th meeting from 5:00 o'clock on will go away, but not from 3:00 to 5:00. 3:00 to 5:00 will remain.
And maybe Mrs. Young, you can double-check that email, because I'm thinking it might be 4:30 to 6:30 with a half-hour break, or was it 4:00 to 6:00? It was 4:00 to 6:00, okay.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions on FFO? Seeing none, we'll move to Ms. Klein on donations?
Yes, we have 10 gifts for information this evening. They total $17,825.80. Four of them are from the HH Dow High School Athletic Booster Club, and that would be for the sports of golf, tennis, girls' soccer, and softball. The remaining gifts are from the American Chemical Society to support the Midland High School Science Department, TNW Management for Midland High Girls Golf, the Kenny Lou Wold Educational Endowment Fund at the Midland Area Community Foundation, which is supporting an at-risk program for students at Midland High School, Midland Kiwanis Foundation supporting East Lawn Elementary 5th Grade Trip, Adams PTO for some wish list items, and the Mary E. McIntyre Memorial Athletic Fund, which is also at the Midland Area Community Foundation. And that is a donation to the Midland High School Athletic Department and to support the athletic participation fees for those students for whom they're waived for financial reasons.
Thank you, thanks to all the donors.
Roll into the next one?
Yep.
All right, well, as you heard in our study committee minutes, we did discuss the audit RFP, that's a request for proposal, and we were very fortunate, because last fall, the Claire Gladwin Regional Education Service District, you might know that as the Claire Gladwin ISD, coordinated a release of a request for proposal for audit services for any interested districts in the local area. And under the terms of the RFP, each district gets to select individually with the firm best meeting our own needs. There was no obligation that all of the districts participating needed to select the same firm, and in fact, I believe there are some firms that may have bid on some districts and not on others. In our case, we had five firms from across Michigan who submitted formal proposals to provide audit services to us. And then following your action in February to hold the bond and sinking fund election, I contacted all five and asked them to provide additional information. I sent them the official ballot language so that they could see the time, the duration, and the amounts, and asked for them to provide estimated cost and hours for auditing those programs as well. After receiving all of that, and all five did respond back with estimates on auditing both bond and sinking fund and the hours. And so we looked at each one, evaluated for price, experience with similar districts, the credentials of those that they identified who would be performing our audit, and we also contacted references, including for Yo and Yo, although they've done our audit for many years, this would be a new auditor. And after evaluating all of those, we recommend entering into a three-year agreement with our current auditors, Yo and Yo. They have been our auditors since 1972-73, although with the retirement of Mari McKenzie, we would have a new principal in charge, and that would be David Youngstrom. I believe you might have had the opportunity to meet him last fall. And Mr. Youngstrom is, in addition to being a Board of Ed member for Freeland Community Schools, so he understands what it's like on your side of the table, he does have extensive experience working with other districts that are similar to Midland, both in size and funding structure. It's very important to us that we find an auditor that understands the 20J situation, because although we don't continue to receive 20J funding, we still have some remnants of that through our Hold Harmless Milage and not qualifying for at-risk. And we've, that was one of the criteria we used in looking at the five proposals, was to say, have they worked with districts where that's been their experience? So you have the prices that were provided, and over the course of three years, the total for the audit would be $78,600. Total for the sinking fund, $1,800. Total for the bond, $2,400. So the total cost would be $82,800. And just for your background, the agenda does show what our costs have been for the prior years, and most recently, we paid $26,600 for the audit of the 11-12 year, and that included not only the ordinary audit, but audit of sinking fund as well. So it would be our recommendation that we approve a three-year agreement with Yo and Yo.
Can I take a motion?
I move that we approve Item 5.3.
Support. Moved by Treasurer Branstad, supported by Secretary Kaminsky. Any questions or comments to Linda?
Yes, I have a few. Why are we going with a three-year contract on this?
They, each one was asked to bid on three years, and they were given the option, they could provide an additional five years, and it just seemed like three years was a better choice than committing to the full five, but we do have that option if we would want to.
And I had benchmarked with Bloomfield Hills and David Youngstrom. He is their lead auditor, and he does a wonderful job there. And he also helps them achieve the ASBO Meritorious Budget Award, and I'm wondering if we can contract him to help us with that.
I talked with him, and Bloomfield Hills actually receives two, internally, we call it ASBO, two ASBO awards. They receive the Certificate of Excellence for Financial Reporting and the Meritorious Budget. Because he is the district auditor, he may not legally or ethically work with them on their budget development, but he does work with them very closely on achieving their certificate of excellence for financial reporting. So we would be able to work with him if we wanted to pursue that award, but he may have no hand in any of the development of our budget, because he has to sit on the other side of the table and question us about our budgeting practices. And I talked with him directly about that, because I'd heard that that was an interest.
So he could not provide any consulting services?
Not on the budget development, no. He could on the broader question of our financial reporting, though.
And essentially does to a large degree in our audits. We get a lot of feedback back on, on that type of thing as part of the audit, not just numbers.
I have a comment or two. I know when we looked at some of the auditing firms, we looked at some of the district sizes that other, when we put this out to bid, I think it's good business practice to put it out. It's been so, such a long time since we've done that. They've done a great job. The references were good, and I felt that they were competitive and a good fit for the district, as far as what we do, and it was just great to, just like we're trying to revisit that, as the FFO report had said, some of the other organizations that we do business with, I think it's good to go back and make sure that they're competitive, check and put it out there.
And not only competitive, but be able to do the quality of work. Some of the other firms had not dealt with districts of our-
Sure.
...size or complexity, especially with bonds and-
Multiple buildings.
-sinking funds and 20Js and all that nice stuff, so it was really reconfirming that we're getting a reasonable price for the complexity we have.
Yep.
Well, Linda, then, as far as consulting goes, are any of the other accounting firms that you receive bids from likely source of consulting?
I would say three of them probably work with smaller districts, and if we were looking for consulting services, I probably would want to release another RFP for that, because there's a very well-known accounting firm that does provide consulting services that, for whatever reason, chose not to bid on the audit. And I believe it may be because they did call me and ask me some questions about the district, and one of them was they wanted to know what it was that we were paying for our current audit, and I suspect they may have concluded that they could not be competitive. So I would want to go back and do a separate RFP if we wanted consulting work done on the budget.
What is that?
And I'd want us to be just a little careful of going down the path of saying that we need that kind of consulting advice, Kim. I mean, Yo and Yo has a great reputation in the Midland area, a lot of us know that. And at least in my six years of being here, and I'm fairly certain that in the previous superintendent's seven years, the audit results that have come back, that have been accepted by the board, have been stellar. And I know you've raised that issue a time or two before about would we benefit from a consultant coming in and helping us? We've discussed that at FFO, and I'm not sensing that from other board members, that we need that kind of assistance. So perhaps this is the kind of discussion that would be carried to a board workshop or a strategic planning session when you have new administrators sitting here with you. Quite frankly, I wouldn't recommend that, I don't see the need for it.
Well, Plant Moran specializes in the student management section of it, and we're precluded from using Yo and Yo for consulting, and especially David Youngstrom, because he is highly educated about Bloomfield Hills financial statements.
Would you care to make a motion to do that?
Sure, that would be great. I would like to make a motion to receive a bid from Plant Moran to consider consulting for us on student management and aligning that with our finances.
Can, I'm sorry, any second? No one wish a second? Motion fails for support of a second.
Okay.
Okay.
Just a point of clarification, I don't know if we had a vote on our motion that was on the table, so-
No, we didn't yet, yeah, we can go to that next, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Any, any other discussion on the original motion on the table?
Oh, I have one other item about the synergistic bid, that it sounds like you're having problems. Was that going through?
Well, that's not germane to the issue we're talking about, maybe-
Yeah, we can bring that, yeah, let's finish this discussion on the-
Okay.
-on the bids. On the bids, and we'll come back. That would have been appropriate for the FFO question earlier. Any other questions on the bid? Seeing none, I'll move into a roll call vote. So if you'll take a roll call, none?
President Wasserman?
Yes.
Vice President Baker?
Yes.
Myself, Secretary Kaminsky, yes. Treasurer Branstad?
Yes.
Member Gordon?
Yes.
Member McFarland?
Yes.
Member Vanderkellen?
Yes.
Seven oh. Okay. Now, Kim, you did ask a question that refers back to the FFO study, so I'd entertain that question.
Okay, my sister's on the Grand Rapids School Board, and they are looking at energy savings, and they're working with Calvin College and an intern who will come in, for them, they'll come in for free for two years, and work with them, and I'm just wondering if we can pursue that to see if it's going to be more of a cost savings to a district.
Yeah, well, why don't I step back, because I want to answer your question about synergistic too, Kim. Jerry knows this, because he's been in on some of the conversations, and so does London, Gary, and Kathy. We are not going to sign a contract with synergistic. The board authorized me to do that on behalf of the district, if we could work out what we thought was an acceptable contract. And I'll tell you, there was some language in the contract that penalized the district rather severely if at some point in time in the first four years, we wanted to pull out. And there was some large sums of money that I could understand why they would be inserted in that contract, because they would come in and during that course of time, bring their expertise on their energy savings program that they just don't want anybody to do, and come in and gain from that, and then bow out of the contract, you know, in the early years. But also in that contract was some language where both they and the district had to agree on who the energy specialist was going to be. And there's some, there were some requirements there that we just could not get comfortable with, and put them in a driver's seat more than I thought we should take a risk with. And so they understand that they have our final offer, if they would like to negotiate that further, they're to contact us. Since I communicated that position, we've not had any contact with them since then. The owner of this company is down in Texas, and we thought they would really like to have us as one of their customers and establish a presence that they used to have in this region with Mount Pleasant and with Saginaw Township. But I just didn't think it was in the best interest of the district to agree to that language, and Jerry was in the loop on all of this, I think we all agree.
And we discussed it at FFO.
Yeah, we discussed it at FFO as well. What I think we could do, and our attorney has pointed out to us, is that there are a number of other options available to us to look at really behavior modification when it comes to adjusting to our utility usage here in the district, and that I think as part of that larger exploration, what will those other companies look like? They apparently have some contract language that's not as punitive as synergistic. And then I think we would need some time to explore that, potentially bring a recommendation back to the board, and if we're going to do that, I'd be happy to have us reach out to Calvin-
Right.
-and have an intern work with us. My experience with interns is when you're dealing with professional companies that can do this, you know, they've got years and years of experience with professionals that have been doing it much longer than an intern would. I'd be surprised if they could compete with that, but who knows until you ask, and so we'd be happy to do that.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, Carl, you summarized it right on behalf of, as president, and I'll speak for FFO a little bit, because I'm on it. There was just contract language that put us in a position of little flexibility in who we hired and how we hired the internal person that would work with these people. And it just really, and the penalties that would come if we didn't do that, or some other things that happened. And it, while they assured us it's never happened in any of their experience, I didn't want to, certainly didn't want us to be the first one. And it was a big enough penalty that it just made no sense, and we didn't under, we understood a little bit, they're in transigence on the issue, but we provided lots of other options to make them feel good, and they just wouldn't accept that, so it was just best to, sometimes the best deals you make are the deals you don't make.
And to make it as simple as you can, the bottom line is, we wanted to have an agreement between them and us on who that person was going to be, and then sign the contract, versus signing the contract which puts the penalty language in place before you have the agreement, and we wouldn't budge on that, and I wouldn't think you'd want me to.
If we never found the right person-
Yeah.
-we owe them a ton of money. It'd be crazy.
Okay, well, good.
Okay, we'll move on to human resources, and we have an HR committee meeting report from Linda.
Yes, we do. We met on Thursday, April 11th, and the first item of business was discussing the bus driver proposal, and Mrs. Klein presented the committee with a proposal for addressing the problems caused by a shortage of substitute bus drivers, which Angela alluded to. And next, the district continues to negotiate with the Midland City-
And next, the district continues to negotiate with the Midland City Educational Support Personnel Association whose contract expired on September 30th of 2012, and the district and the association will meet again on April 17th. Next, Ms. Vaschis brought us up to date on workers' compensation case and the associated future costs to the district. And then next informed the committee of two issues involving staff members with discipline issues. And lastly, Mr. Verlindi gave the committee an update on the staffing and the process that continues. And our next meeting, I had to read this twice, is not until next October. And these minutes are available out in the hallway as well as the FFO.
Any questions or comments to Lynn? Seeing none, I'll hand it over to Mr. Verlindi.
Thank you, Mr. Wasserman. Following staff members who've announced their retirement effective of the date indicated. We have two teachers, and the effective date would be June 13, 2013. And that's Ms. Cheryl Collins, teacher at Jefferson Middle School, and Ms. Deb Randall, teacher at East Lawn Elementary. And then also we have a bus driver who will be retiring effective June 1, and that'd be Ms. Florence Mapes over at Transportation. And we thank them for their service. And then the board and the staff extend their deepest sympathy to the family of Mrs. Nyla Lebsak, who passed away on March 23rd. Mrs. Lebsak taught in the Business Education Department at Midland High School for 31 years, retiring in 2002.
Thank you. Any questions for Gary? Seeing none, in your agenda, you'll see correspondence to and from the Board of Education that's occurred since our last meeting, and you'll see our scheduled activities, April 29th, again now, beginning at 3 o'clock with a closed session for the superintendent search. And I don't think, as Cindy said, the May 13th one reflects yet the front-end meeting of the, of the new budget workshop. And to be abundantly clear in the abundant workshop, it was spoken about, like to highlight it for the public. The reason we are postponing that is because of the delay in where the certainty is on the funding in terms of governor's proposal, House proposal, and Senate proposal. And if we come forward now, we'd all be guessing at what they're going to do, just leaving more uncertainty. And when we've had to do that in the past, and we've had to do it in the past when we didn't get numbers until October or September or July of the following year, you end up having to take a very conservative approach because you have to take a conservative approach. And so rather than us guessing at the number and taking a conservative approach at the number, we're waiting till we get more certainty to have the meeting on that day.
Plus two other reasons, Jerry. The May Revenue Sharing Conference for the State of Michigan should be over by then, and our election results could be over. And if both those election proposals are successful over a 10-year period of time, if you assume you need what we're asking for, there could be $75 million of relief to the general fund over a decade, so.
Or conversely, if they don't pass, I hit to the general fund.
So though, in all honesty, in my career, when you've got three major things like that, some uncertainty with the legislative budget, the election, and the May Revenue Sharing Conference, it makes all kinds of sense to hold off on a budget workshop for the following year.
Get as much certainty as we can.
Yep.
Okay, that opens up to the next part of the agenda. We now go into hearings from board members. We'll do those now, and announcements from Carl. And then we'll move into the superintendent focus study group results. I think I started left last time, didn't I? Who got to go first last time?
Me.
Kim did? Okay, I'll let Scott go first this time.
I have nothing to say this evening. Pass my time.
Angela?
I don't have a lot to say. I know it's been a pretty rough last week, and before that was spring break. And I guess the only other thing I want to say is I'm not sure that we're going to meet again before the election. Is that a true statement in a public?
In an open session?
In an open session, so I would really like to encourage people, not only to go out and vote, but before you vote, make sure that you become informed on what you're voting on. Don't, please don't make any assumptions. Really look into why we're doing what we're doing. We would not be asking the public for these two if we didn't feel like it was absolutely necessary to maintain the level of excellence that we have for our students here in Midland. Thank you.
Okay. It's been a busy week. You know, Carl, and President Wasserman, you've been out with various organizations, and it's been, I don't know how much, if you have any room left on your calendar, I mean, just getting out and talking to a lot of the community groups, and it's been a pretty busy time educating the community. I've had numerous discussions and passing out some of the pamphlets, and I think that there's, there's many opportunities to educate our public as far as what we're trying to do. And I have talked to some individuals in the community to say that I'm retired or I'm on a fixed income. This is going to be hard for me to do. And just explaining to them the reason why we've gone to ask for this election, for the sinking fund and the technology bond, but also understanding in how far, or how long ago we started, what the community survey showed, what our focus groups have showed and so forth. And I think we're getting plenty of opportunities for the public to understand what amazing things the kids are doing with the iPads and with the technology bond, and some of the security benefits and so forth. And I think that getting that understanding, allowing individuals to hear, you know, where do we start? How long ago did we start doing our homework? I think that overall, I think we've had a lot of support in the public, but it is a difficult thing to ask of people. And I think when they realize the reason why and what we can do for education, I think they're quite excited about it.
You're on.
I really have nothing to say this evening either.
Lynn?
I actually have several. Just, I'll make up for that for those that are a little quieter. I've been sent a couple of different items. And I received an email from Laura Peterson, who is one of our media, head media specialists. And she wanted me to share this. The middle school media center consolidation project worked with United Way. We had 17 individuals from the Young Leaders United Group, which consists of young professionals from Dow Chemical, Yider Insurance, Chemical Bank, and Midland Hospital. They spent two hours at Jefferson Middle School, and this was their first volunteer project for this group. And they were excited to be offering their volunteer efforts to assist in the educational community. And it just reflects again the great support Midland Public Schools has from volunteers in our community. I wanted to share that from Laura. And then also, some of you may have seen the recognition that was given to Chet Johnson at Northeast for, for his great work, working with a young man that he invited to participate on the basketball team and the football team, who has some special needs. And so Chet's a really, he's a great guy, if you know him, and he is, does a lot at Northeast. So I thought that was very nice that they took the time to special, for a special honor for him. And then, let's see. This one is kind of near and dear. My daughter was involved with IB Art, and their project, their kind of end-of-the-year project is being shown at the Alden V. Dow Holman Studio, starting on Wednesday night, I think, is the opening. So if anybody has a chance, public, staff, students, if you want to get over there and at the Alden V. Dow Holman Studio, different times on several days this week, the kids will be, have their artwork up and reflected. And administration building doesn't have to put up with holes in the wall and nails, but I'm sure you'll miss all that gorgeous art. So, and I wanted to share that. And Midland High is presenting their musical Man of La Mancha this week. And let's see. And lastly, for Midland High, hopefully next month I'll showcase Dow High. But their symphonic band just went to Kalamazoo, to Western Michigan, last week. And I had hoped to be able to go, but I was not able to. But they were one of two Michigan high school bands that were invited to perform at the Western Michigan University Spring Conference on Wind and Percussion Music. And this is a pretty prestigious event. And in addition, Kathy Paritz, their director of orchestras and the assistant director of bands, was a guest conductor for one of the selections. So it was quite an honor for them to spend the day at Western Michigan with some other fantastic musicians and performers and directors last week. And I guess I'd like to just say thank you to people that have been attending our tech bond and our sinking fund presentations and our superintendent search sessions. So there's been just lots going on, and I thought, wow, I'd take the time tonight to acknowledge all those things.
Thank you.
Kim?
I wanted to thank the Midland Area Community Foundation and Saginaw Valley State University for gathering and analyzing data to come up with the 13 initiatives to improve the community. I see many potential synergies that will be very helpful to the students of Midland County. Thank you for taking this initiative, and I hope shortly we will be able to work together to create sustainable projects for the benefits of the students. And I would also like to thank the League of Women Voters for backing both the school millage proposals. The money is needed to move the schools to the 21st century. And thank you, Carl and Jerry, for doing a wonderful job talking to the League of Women Voters. And I also wanted to say that the Warner family and all the people touched by Jake are all in my thoughts and prayers as we try to recover from this tragic loss.
Thank you. I'll keep my comments. I'll keep this one particularly short. Thanks to the Northeast staff and students and parents and parents of Jake for what they went through in the last week, and my heart's out to you. Second, thanks to all the people coming to the focus meetings that you mentioned that we're going to hear about here in a few minutes. Pretty good attendance, and I'm very pleased with the input we've gotten and the amount of input we've gotten. And lastly, on the millage elections, the millage and the sinking fund, we have some community sessions coming up to discuss those. And Carl, I can't remember the dates off the top of my head. Got them in the calendar. But please look on our website, and please come to those if you want an explanation of why we're asking for what we're asking for and what it does for us, and why the amounts are set what they're set, and why the timings are what they are. That will all be explained. But in Reader's Digest form, you saw the interview we got to in the paper, and thanks to the Midland Daily News for their prominent display. You know, this is local money for local needs. We've had Lansing dictating operating funds now for 15 years. This is a way we get an opportunity as a community to, to offer our educational experience like we've used to versus what we've been dictated to by Lansing. So please think of that as you go to the polls. From a sinking fund, it's 2% of our asset base. We're asking to invest 2% of our asset base back into our assets every year. That's a 50-year replacement rate. And I can't deny for people who say, I just can't afford this, I understand. When Carl says that, I say that, and that's a personal decision. But from a what we're asking for perspective, we're asking for 2% for a 50-year turnover on these buildings. And it's, it's enough just to keep the roofs going, the boilers going, the wires going, et cetera, over time. And, and lastly, it, the technology millage gives us a great opportunity to leap forward in how we educate our kids. And the number one thing that I think we're going to get from it is more individualized, I'll call it instruction and response. Teachers are going to be able to see what kids are learning faster and in more detail than ever before and be able to more instantly respond to those differentiations, and that's going to make a big difference in how we educate our kids going forward versus a cycle of instruct, quiz, grade, come back the next day and do things. Our, over time, we will be get much more attuned to that than traditional methods allow us to today. So that said, please come to public sessions and please go out and vote, and we'd love your support.
I want to be fairly brief of mine so we can get on to your superintendent search business. Just a reminder that we put a packet of informational literature. This is not positional literature, meaning it's not promoting a position. This is informational in nature, which we are allowed to do as a district, and our comments here are meant to be of the same ilk. We need to be informational here and not necessarily proactive in our comments. That comes at a, at a meeting outside, school equipment and school time and so on. The date of those two community meetings are this Wednesday, April 17th, from 7:00 to 8:30 at the auditorium at the Dow Library, and then again on Tuesday, April 30th, the same time, from 7:00 to 8:30. You are right, we have talked to a lot of folks already this month, from district parent involvement committees to different senior groups, to civic clubs, and I think tomorrow, I have four that are on my list. And I'm the only school employee that can actually talk positionally about an election on school time. Superintendents are allowed to do that. I want to give a shout out to our Carpenter staff, our Carpenter Elementary staff, because they've been invited to present at a statewide school improvement conference. I believe it's down in Lansing on the 18th this week on something that they're piloting this year called instructional rounds, and that's an opportunity for administrators, but not just administrators, but fellow teachers, to get in other teachers' classrooms and really observe quality instruction and teaching and learning, and then share those conversations and dialogue around the building as part of their school improvement team. So it's quite an honor for them to have been selected to come down and present that, and they are looking forward to doing that. And then the last thing is, a couple of you have also mentioned this. I'll tell you, given the tragic death of one of our students at Northeast Middle School this past week, I've sent a couple of different emails out to the board just acknowledging the tremendous job that our Midland Public School staff has done to support each other, most importantly, to support the family and the students in those buildings. And I saw evidence again at that, at the funeral yesterday afternoon. You would be proud to know that you had staff and administrators and teachers from all levels of the organization that attended that funeral. Elementary, middle school, the high schools, this office complex, central office. It was pretty incredible, and this is a special family, let me tell you, that's wrestling with a tragedy that we hope none of us have to face. So thank you to all of our staff. Even today, there was support again onsite at Northeast Middle School. We're thinking this will be the last day that's necessary, but we even checked in, Mr. Verlindi checked in at Jefferson Middle School to make sure those students were doing just fine, and they were doing okay. So I'm very proud of our staff. I think all of you would be as supportive of education as well. And with that, I think that's all I have to offer you this evening.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments with the good of the order?
I did, Carl, correct me if I'm wrong, on Wednesday's presentation at the library, is there going to be some students available prior to that?
There are going to be some, yeah, prior to the meeting, there will be some students there, I think, with some of their family members demonstrating the use of iPads, but once the meeting starts, they will no longer be there.
So it should be a chance for some of the public to see some of the students and all elementary students hands-on, so. Yeah, Kim?
Okay, we'll move on to the rest of the agenda. Carl and the directors are going to excuse themselves for the evening. And we will move on to a report by Mr. Peterson, and I'll refresh the public. Dave is from School Exec Connect, the firm we have hired to help us guide us through our superintendent search.
How's that? Good evening. It's nice to join you again. As President Wasserman said, there's two big things we have to do tonight. First is to go over the results of the focus groups and survey so that the board has a sense of what your community had to say as a result of this. And then second, we have another presentation to go over, which begins to go over the interview process that the board will be using. And the reason we do that tonight is so that you have plenty of time to prepare and feel well-prepared for your first round of interviews. So I'd like to begin with the survey results. You asked that we conduct focus groups with a variety of stakeholder groups, and I'd like to say that we have never done more stakeholder groups than we did here in Midland. This was the most, the largest number of groups we have ever done on a search, and that applies to the entire Midwest, not just Michigan. That we conduct an online survey, and I'm going to tell you a little bit about that survey and some cautions I have about the data that we collected in the survey. And then finally, the most important part of this was to try to put this data together in some common themes and create some criteria that we would use in our interviews with the candidates and that you will in turn use as you evaluate the candidates. And that's going to be the, the very end of the presentation that I would ask you to really focus in on because that's going to be important that you frame those things in your mind for the, for the interviews. Just covered that slide. Summary of the data collection, we had an online survey with 57 responses. That is a very low response rate. That contrasts with what we had in the focus groups. That contrasts with what we had in the focus groups. Just, I've done some survey research in my career. If you were relying on this survey, I would tell you, don't even consider it because it is such a low response rate for your community. I can't comment on why that is. You've got a lot going on right now. And oftentimes, I can tell you, in a district where there are no controversies or issues of any big issues, this is, can be kind of typical, but this was a very, very low online response rate. This was not. We conducted thirty-two meetings. Many of those groups, there aren't thirty-two groups there because many of those groups had multiple chances to participate, but we had a hundred and sixty-five attendees at those and the quality of the groups, because you specifically reached out to invite people, was very high, very meaningful things, very informed people, very involved. So, I have a good deal of confidence in what we learned from the focus groups. And I do want to say, while I don't have a great deal of confidence in the survey data, it's largely reflective of what came out in the focus group, so, not a big deal. And I would be very remiss if I didn't thank Mrs. Young for her assistance in scheduling these groups. It ran like clockwork, surprise, surprise, but it was a real pleasure and she also kept the water flowing when voices got tired. I've already told you that. Let's go to the broad themes we found and we're going to focus on the strengths of the district, challenges the districts face, focus for the first three years of the superintendent's work, and then finally, attributes.
Can I ask a question? Will we get a copy of this at some point?
Yes, Cindy has a copy of it, she can forward you. Strong teachers, principals, administrators and staff, a common theme. And anything on here is a common theme. If there was an outlier issue, I've got it at the end there that I'll make you aware of, okay? But these were common themes. Engaged parents and a community that supports the schools in many tangible ways. Strong interdependent relationships with your community agencies and organizations. We have lots of communities with strong community organizations, but the interdependence of the relationships here is really remarkable. I just want to tell you that the extent to which you have programs operating in the community where people know they're great programs, but they're not quite sure whether they're from the school or from another community agency. It's just a very synergistic impact and it really improves the quality of life in your schools and in your community. This was from the school board, no, I'm just kidding, this wasn't. A good school board that listens and represents the community's interests. Great students, a child-focused district, good extracurricular offerings, strong music and art programs, a strong curriculum and a district compares, that compares well against regional peer groups. More strengths, special education program with an emphasis on inclusion, a specific group of parents of students with special needs came to talk specifically about that and to make sure that we included questions for the potential superintendent candidates on that. And high levels of student achievement, students are well-prepared for college. That was a very common theme across the groups. Challenges and barriers, surprise, surprise. Finances and revenues to maintain quality, again and again and again and again, knowing what you've been through. Again, a surprise, technology on all levels, including infrastructures, classroom applications and training, you're working on that. Continued implementation of a variety of innovative programs, IB being an example, just continue to do that. Innovation and new ways of teaching, teacher professional development, class sizes, changing demographics and an increasingly diverse student population and increasing poverty. Again, a common theme from a variety of groups that the demographics of Midland have changed, partly because of the recession and partly because of some other factors and it's creating challenges for the schools. Employee relations, no surprise to the board, given what you've been through the last few years. Declining enrollment, a need to innovate and adapt more quickly as an organization. Education in the district, and this is a theme, obviously there's editorial things that go on here, but this is something we kind of, a theme we heard, that education in the district is at the cusp of change and need to implement those changes effectively. And I think it applies to the issues of technology, instructional improvement, a variety of things in that area. Loss of local control. A number of groups, in particular your former school board members lament the days when there was more local control and less Lansing control. Challenges and barriers, we just need a strong clear vision of where we're going as a school district. We need high expectations for all, not just college-bound students and that's part of that demographic issue, those conversation threads were interrelated. We need a stronger internal and external communication as a school district and some issues of aging infrastructure. Areas of focus for the next three years, just to clarify for the board why we ask this question. We ask people this because oftentimes, if the board agrees with this, this becomes a major part of the agenda for the new superintendent over the next three years, which is likely to be the length of their contract. And so, it's, if you agree with this, this becomes part of your expectations in the way you evaluate your new superintendent. Implement a strategic technology plan to advance best practices in technology at all levels of the organization. Achieve financial stability. Create a collaborative, trusting, team-oriented environment between central office, building administrators, teachers and support staff. Develop a clear vision and focus for the future. Need to take the next steps toward excellence. Develop a 21st century learning focus. Continue to increase student achievement and career and college readiness for all students. Continue implementation and expand innovative curricular offerings. Evaluate existing programs. The focus there is, maybe there's some things we should stop doing to start doing some new things. Improve communication both internally and with parents and the community. And now, we go to the desired attributes. Highly visible in both the district and the community. Be everywhere, committed to the community. This is a really consistent theme here. You have so much community involvement in your schools, it's very important to all groups that the superintendent be everywhere. Accessible, trustworthy, strong interpersonal skills and a good listener who will support staff. Well-spoken, excellent writing and speaking skills. A leader with a global perspective focused on innovation, 21st century skills and research-based practices. A strong educational background, success as an educator. There was little support for any groups for a non-traditional candidate, meaning somebody who didn't have an educational background. It was mentioned a couple of times, but it was, there was not support for it and some groups actively talked about, "We need a traditional educator." A CEO with a strong confident personality that came from your business and foundation community, but it was also expressed in other groups. A strategic financial thinker and planner, that doesn't mean necessarily a bean counter, it means a strategic financial thinker, okay? You've got a great business office already, you don't need somebody to duplicate that work. Doctor preferred by many, others see it only as preferable. A leader who will help create a clear vision, you'll see some, again, themes here that came up again and again and lead toward that vision. A willing to question the status quo and lead thoughtful change and a collaborative leader who will engage others in the work of the district. Other issues, some issues that came up and again, I don't think this will be any surprise to the board. Morale among teachers and building-level administrators need to be improved as a result of the pretty significant actions you've had to take over the last few years. Cabinet members stress the need for the district to support building-level innovation and reduce bureaucracy. I'm not going to go through each one of these, but I wanted the board, we had three different groups of board members that met and I, at least haven't been a part of a discussion where the board ever talked as a group about what they had. So, I'm not, I just want you to see what you had to say in these meetings and ask me any questions about that because this is, while the input is very important, it's important you hear it, you're the decision-makers in this process and the decision-making is going to get tough from here on out. Strengths, size of the district, you can see that, what that has to say there. The qualification level of the community and staff, this relates to the expectations that exist in your community. Commitment to quality education and you can see a very articulate statement about how that translates into a kid-centric community. Community expectations, and again, an explanation of what that means. Parents and students in our community interact and mix together regardless of socioeconomics. There's no good side of town versus bad side of town and that's something that the new person's going to have to understand. There's equal access and opportunity. Again, the collaborative programs, the community groups run, strong curriculum, good systems in place. You're going to see something here that we see in districts where all the arrows are pointed in the same direction, is that the board's positions on these issues largely reflect that of what you've already seen in the community, okay? Which is a good thing. Consistency and equity in the curriculum, students have access to the same classes. Again, common themes. Challenges and barriers, little worry about the kid-centered culture because of the aging of the community, funding and legislative uncertainty. District expectations were set when finances are good and now you're struggling with some of the issues that happen when finances are not good. And what are the implications of that for the district? We need to unite people and get them working together. Again, this common theme of the district's expansion phase has passed and we've been in a contraction phase. What are the implications of that for the future? Money and finances, benchmarking against other districts, we've talked about that. The current political climate. Incorrect mindset that everyone is, Midland is well-off, we talked about that earlier. Growth in the, poverty in the district, wide economic diversity. Focus, again, very similar. Innovation in curriculum and delivery systems, enhance revenue and get the budget in balance. Need to be able to adapt to new environments, need to be innovative and attain number-one status. Prepare students to be career-ready, implement IB throughout the system, maintain a culture of student achievement. Technology, pass the bond and sinking fund, curriculum excellence, staff retention, continue and grow strong partnerships with the business community. Attributes, creative and innovative with resources, willing to take calculated risks. Ability to recruit and select talented staff and build a high-performing team. Proven experience with running an organization. Sensitivity and commitment to the learning needs of all students, again, that's a theme that came up and up again in all the groups. Ability to unite people around a mission or a theme, IG 21st Century Learning. Experience implementing learning models and interventions that address the individual learning needs of students at all achievement levels. Experience in working with boards. A non-traditional candidate. Strategic planning and visionary skills, interest-based bargaining experience, a strong leader who empowers assistants, a great communicator, high integrity, that goes without saying. Strong values, highly approachable, a strong listener, highly visible, a knowledge of finance, can continue strong board relationships. Effective relationships with employee groups, student-focused, proactive and can maintain city and media relationships, we've already talked about that. Other issues that the board brought up, prefer an education professional, that was the consensus, although there were some outlying opinions on that. Prefer experience with leadership at the top, meaning, and we're taking that as sitting Education and superintendent experience preferred, but very open to candidates with the right skill set. I just, you can see the very low rate of survey response. Because of that, I'm going to skip over the survey results. They're again, very consistent, you can go over that yourself. If you have any questions about that, you can shoot me an email, but given the board's time, it's a very small sample to go through basically the same data, so with your permission, I'm going to slip through, skip through those slides. Okay. Now, this is the, let me get back here. Okay. This is the part that's for board review. We have divided this into three areas. The first general area pertains to educational leadership and background and what we've attempted to do here is boil down all that data that we just went through into some just bulleted characteristics. And if you approve these, what we will do is use your interview questions to then create rubrics that'll tap into these characteristics. There's other things you're going to want to assess as well, basic skill set stuff that I will talk about when we get to interviews, but in boiling down these characteristics, these are some of the things the board's going to want to look at as they interview candidates. A visionary educator with a global perspective and a passion for innovation and excellence. A leader who will focus the district's efforts on 21st century learning and research-based educational practices. An educator with high expectations for all students who can address increasing diversity and close achievement gaps where they exist. Someone who has a student-centered knowledge of curriculum, instruction and student learning. A strong background in public education with proven success as an educator, a knowledgeable and strategic financial planner. Those would be the educational leadership categories. The second, this slide pertains to what we called community leadership because there was such an emphasis here on what you were looking for in your community. And by the way, am I facing my back to the camera when I do this?
I think you're okay. I think the camera's.
Okay, all right. A CEO with a strong confident personality who can maintain and strengthen relationships with a vibrant business community. A collaborative community leader who will continue to strengthen and expand collaborations with community organizations, foundations and agencies. And a highly visible leader who will be committed to both the district and the community on a long-term basis. This final category pertains to solid leadership skills and interpersonal skills that we think you should be looking for. A visionary and inspiring leader, inspiring leader who will engage and inspire others to create a clear vision for the district. A leader who is accessible, trustworthy and a good listener who will support the staff in their work. A leader who is well-spoken and an excellent communicator in small and large groups as well as in writing. Someone who builds good teams and brings out the best in others. A leader who is willing to question the status quo and lead thoughtful change. Again, this theme of collaboration, including others in decision-making and building trust with and among the district's various constituencies.
And Dave, does this person come with his own blue suit with red shield on it?
Exactly, exactly.
Or she.
Or she. But those are the things that we heard focus on and those are, there's some important themes here that differentiate you from other districts and one is the need for, every superintendent has to be visible, but it's the amount of visibility required in this community to maintain the collaborative relationships that you have with some pretty strong personalities who I met. Good personalities, but strong personalities, so you need that.
That means school and non-school.
School and non-school. I'm talking about primarily about non-school. People with really high expectations for the superintendent of the district. Also, you are here looking at the perspective of a person whose skills and expertise lie in instruction, curriculum and in leadership in those areas. While you want somebody who understands finance and can think big picture about finance, you're looking for an educational leader for the district where it's poised to make the next step forward in excellence. Questions for me?
Thanks for all the work. I know that in the particular focus group that I sat in on with Carol, it was amazing because we haven't had a chance to think Blue Sky. And we discussed about a lot of, we sort of had a self-education process and going through, it was a standard set of questions, I think, that everybody that day, on those different days went through. And what I'm hearing is, is collaboration, innovation, team-building with the number of retirements that we've had. I'm also hearing about being strategic, innovation, 21st century learning. And I really think that we are going into the next phase where we have to innovate, innovate and we have to grow and we have to really change in our delivery and I think that we have so much in front of us that can facilitate that. So, it's really exciting to see that and I know we've got to dig in, we've got a lot of work to go, but it's just great, it's a great start.
I just want to stress that, number one, the number of, the number of different invitational groups that we heard from and how common those themes were and you captured them very nicely, but also the tremendous support there is in the community for these schools. I mean, you know, you're hearing a lot of suggestions for, here's what we think you ought to do, but there's a tremendous amount of support in the community for what the work that the staff has done, the work that the board does and the work that goes on every day with the students. It's really a remarkable community. I can contrast it with some of the other districts we've done in Oakland County where the community was very divided and things were pretty messy at the beginning of some of the two superintendent searches and you should feel good that you're not facing those kinds of challenges. You're facing this, how do we take a really good district and just move it up and find a leader to do that? a leader to do that?
May I ask? I guess the thing I found most interesting, because Dave collects input from lots of different people, and he comes in semi-unvarnished about Midland, he gets some first impressions when he comes, and here's some things. And I think because we're so used to it, that we sometimes don't see some things. And the thing that I thought was the biggest takeaway that Dave, when he explained this to me before the meeting, was the interwoven nature of our community that we often take for granted. It's, as he said, it's not different agencies slash foundations slash companies touching each other. It's all interwoven in this intricate tangled web that no one can explain, but exists, and it works wonderfully for us and is very unique in this type of community or any kind of school district, actually. And having the input from those folks tell us what we need is very important, I thought that was great.
Mrs. Vanderkellen mentioned earlier the developmental assets that are available in a community, and I've done some work in that area with other communities, and it's really unique to see them tied together so well in this community in the way it supports different groups of people. And I can't stress enough, I was talking with some of the most sophisticated members of your community because you could just tell when they came in, but they were worried about the families that are struggling, the kids that are struggling with poverty. And they had numbers, facts, figures. It was just, it was just really remarkable. If my kids were a lot younger, this would be a, well, they really don't need to raise them anymore, hopefully, but this would be a community where I'd want my kids to grow up, you know, and you learn a lot about this community real quickly in these processes, so you're very fortunate.
And the expectation historically of those very people you're speaking of is that our superintendent be on boards of those organizations and play intimately in that sphere via boards and other things, and so I think we have that same expectation of the new superintendent going forward.
Yeah, and they expect the superintendent to play a role in that leadership and say, listen, these are the emerging needs in our community, both educational and noneducational, let's get on the same page and let's do something about it. And so that's, it's very impressive. Just leave it at that.
Well, and I also think the key part where you were talking about innovation is going to be critical to us going forward as charters are going to be able to come in, so we need somebody who knows how to compete.
To that point, all of education is going like this, primarily as a result of the expectations of a global economy and that interacting with changing technology, and so you're hearing the same thing from your community that's going on all over the place. Ready to switch, talk about interviews. You got a way-too-lengthy packet from us on this interview process, so I'm just going to hit the highlights with these slides, and surprise, surprise, you'll end up with more work as a result of that, just what you needed. We're going to talk about the recommended interview and selection process overall, the first interview, the second interview, just a brief point on contract considerations, the site visit, confirmation of the superintendent, and then sample interview questions and some technicalities around the interviews that you'll be conducting. I assume they'll be in this room, President Wasserman? Yeah. So, just a quick overview again. Our timeline, and we believe we're going to be able to meet it, is that we'll present you a candidate slate on the 29th. Reminder that that is a closed session until the board announces who they intend to interview, and you will do that the evening of the 29th, unless you want time to deliberate, you can take it. But the plan would be that you'd announce that slate on the 29th, and at that point, those names become public.
So Cindy, what we'll need to do for the 29th is say we're going to have a closed session, that we go to an open session thereafter? And if the open session on the 29th is, gee, we're going to deliberate some more, that's fine. If it is announcing the candidates for interview, we'll be doing it then. So we'll go to, we'll have a closed and then finish with an open?
Is it open or closed?
Yeah, you got to always start with an open to go to close.
Two or three minutes, yeah. I want to prepare the board for what happens on the 29th, especially those of you who have not been through a superintendent search, especially in the days of modern technology. Immediately, certain people in your community will begin Googling the candidates, primarily that, will begin contacting their districts. Union leadership usually calls the union leadership in the district. Name the kind of employee you have, and they contact comparable employees in the districts. Parents will start calling parents and relatives, and all that's going to start coming back to you in different ways. I would strongly encourage you this early in the process to simply say thank you. I understand your input. If you have something to say that you want all the board to hear, you should come to one of the board meetings, but thank you very much. To start engaging the community early in the process about individual candidates is one of the things that derails searches. We will try to make you, in this day and age, especially school superintendents, it's very rare to find somebody who doesn't have someone, something negative to say about someone. We'll try to make you aware of what you may hear in that range, and then you can decide how you want to address it. But believe me, if you Googled my last three years, you would think I was not a nice guy, and I am. But, you know, things happen. We will then schedule, when you announce the slate, we will schedule the first interviews for you. You'll have that all mapped out, and we'll take care of scheduling that and set that up, and right now we have the week, May 6th, 6th, 7th, and 8th targeted for that. First interview preparation. You will, on the 29th, you will get a full packet on all candidates, okay? And each board member will have that, so you'll have their application, their resume, anything else that we prepared, and you will have that to study before the first interview. You will have interview questions prepared. You've got, I think, an hour and 15 minutes allocated, President Wasserman? That's going to allow each board member to ask two or three questions. Our recommendation that that goes, President Wasserman sets the stage with the candidates, and he asks the first easy question to put the candidate at ease, and then you ask one question in rotation, one time around, second time around, time permitting, three times around. And he'll set the stage for them, saying, we have an hour and 15 minutes, we're going to have 21 questions or 18 questions, and that's all you need to do, see how the candidate does in being succinct with their time. A board member should feel free, if something that a candidate says intrigues you, follow up, but try to limit your follow-ups to one question, okay? Every one of these first candidates should be asked the same set of questions. The follow-ups don't have to be the same, but the questions should be the same so that you can do apples-to-apples comparisons.
I have a question. So of that hour and 15 minutes, is there a specific time where they're allowed to ask us questions back, or is that just as we're asking questions, they can interject?
I would recommend that you leave them five to 10 minutes to ask you questions. This is a two-way process all the way through, so as you ask the questions, they will be looking at the way you ask them. They're going to be looking at the way you listen to them. It's a two-way street here all along because you're trying to decide if it's a match, and so are they, if they end up being offered the position. We had talked early in the process, and I didn't know whether you wanted to continue to do that, of having, because the sessions are held in public, I think you had mentioned, President Wasserman, that during your last search, people in the audience could turn in cards at the conclusion of the interviews with feedback?
Yeah, they could write cards during the interview, and then you or one of your peers would collect them so that at the end of the interview, if there was time, you could introduce, you could ask those questions on behalf of the audience that may have come forward.
Okay. We have included a form if the board wants to do that again, that you can use for that, and you can also, that we would also just encourage the board to just keep that as another data point.
And Dave, not to go into weeds, and you and I can talk it later, oftentimes those questions would end up being a question we asked five minutes after they wrote it.
Right.
And so you'd be able to go, no, I'm not going to do that one.
Yeah.
You don't even have to read it.
They also can serve as, if they're particularly complex questions, they can also serve as a basis for your questions in the second round if that candidate moves forward. The interview questions. It's important to us that, this is one of the things the board has to do on their own. Now, what we've done is prepare for you a long list of questions that sample pretty much every area of expertise in school administration, particularly the superintendency, that you can use to model your questions. I'm not sure what process you want to do to do that, but we basically want to get to the point by the first interviews that every board member has three questions that they're going to ask in round one of the interviews, and that those, that when the entire board is sampled, we've sampled every one of those areas that are included in that. Typically, board members look through that list, maybe draft two or three questions of particular interest to them, forward those to President Wasserman, he can see if there's any duplications, send them to me, I can work on them a little bit and bring them back, and then route them around that way.
Recycle one time, so that everybody can then say, okay, this looks like a good list, or gee, I'd really rather see this rather than that.
Right.
Okay, why don't we proceed that way?
Okay. So literally, go through that list, take a look at your areas of interest, draft, use those as a basis, and then draft questions. When you draft your questions, just a little guidance on that, don't ask questions on complex school district issues where these initial candidates may, in other words, what do you think about the way we set forth our sinking fund proposal and our bond? Because the candidates may not have information on that, they end up asking you questions back and forth, and it ends up being a question that doesn't give you a lot of data. So keep your questions focused on the big, important issues, and try to include a behaviorally based component to that question. You want to get at their attitudes and values, and then you want an example of how they did it.
Yeah, that's second point. Having interviewed for Dow for many, many years in the current company, you cannot emphasize enough, give me an example of this behavior, because everything else is just papal.
Yeah.
Everybody will tell you the right answer.
If you ask me if I'm in favor of international baccalaureate, bingo. If you ask me to give concrete examples of innovative programs that I've implemented in my current district, what obstacles did I run into and how did I get around them? Also, you want to know about this person's attitudes, their reasoning ability, you know, are they smart? Judgment in areas of interest to the board, are they going to use the kind of judgment the board would expect them to use? And I just talked about, don't ask leading questions where the answer's obvious. We talked about, you can compile them, and you and I can work together on them, and then we can route them back and get a second gloss on them. Interview and selection. We talked about President Wasserman setting the stage and asking the first question. Questions in rotation, talked about that. Brief follow-ups, we talked about that. During the interviews of the five candidates, it will facilitate the decision-making even if you take a break between candidates and between days that the board not discuss the candidates until you've seen all five or six. Try not to fall in love with anybody without hearing what the other board members have to say. You're all going to have your opinions on people, and you're going to have careful notes, and, you know, you may give a big star beside somebody's name, but hold off until the final discussion of all the candidates occur so that you can all profit from what other board members have to say. And during the interview, remember that the candidates should do most of the talking. This is not, you've had your chance to say what you're looking for in the superintendent, now it's to find out if they've got it. So ask your question. If they, if it's a dumb answer, write that down in your notes. Remember the candidates are interviewing you as well, make sure they walk away thinking this is the board that they will want to work with. Give positive feedback to all the candidates at the end of the interview. Take extremely careful notes on each candidate because you're going to have to come back, and you will find that you have different recollections of what people had to say because you'll key in on one thing. So if you take really good notes while maintaining eye contact with them, it's a challenge, but it will be helpful to you. Narrowing the pool. Here's the problem. You have to discuss someone's whole professional career and their ability to respond to your questions, and you have to do it in public in a way that's humane to them. So we have a recommended process here for doing that. We'd like each board member, let's say you have candidate A, B, C, D, E, and F, we'd like each board member, you've conducted all your interviews, we'd like each board member to comment on candidate A's strengths and go right around the table. Continue until you've all have finished, and then ask for any closing statements that any board member might have about a candidate A. You know, I really think candidate A has potential to be a good fit for the district, we have another interview left to go, but I would really like to see this candidate in the slate, something like that. Do that for all five candidates, and then, I have to be careful of the term I use, there's something to do with straw polls that we have to be careful about, but what we suggest is, is that at the conclusion of that, and keep going around the board, there's no limit. If you want to, if, I've got another comment I want to make, but they're all positive. So you keep going around until everybody's exhausted that, you've all listened carefully to one another, then you take a piece of paper, write down the five names, five is the highest, one is the lowest, pass them over to Mr. Wasserman, he compiles those. If any candidate has a score of five, there's no need to discuss that candidate anymore, it's over. Unless somewhat, you have a right to, you know, no, 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 wait a minute, wait a minute. But basically, if two are at the bottom of that, you're done. Or three. The two to three candidates with the highest ballot scores should be selected unless further discussion is needed. And then again, that's the president's job to make sure, is there any other thing that you want to say about this before we conclude that these are the three candidates we're moving forward? If you could move three forward, it will give you more options.
And we have reserved three dates for three final candidate?
That's correct. We want to expect the best and plan for the worst. It has happened that you'll move two candidates forward, and the second candidate will accept a job, or say, you know what, I'm withdrawing, and then you've limited your options. So, three if you can do it. We've talked about this. Simply put, the press and other media will possibly print or broadcast comments, in your case, these comments are televised. I will give you a concrete example of this in a district not too far from here. One of the board members commented on a candidate, oh, our community would eat him alive. The other board members did not agree with that, the candidate withdrew. And they lost a very good candidate who the community would not have eaten alive, but that comment was made public, and the person said, I'm not going to be embarrassed in front of my family. And so, you know, just remember that as you evaluate candidates, they should not hear about their weaknesses or poor responses in a public forum. They are going to be nervous, no matter how experienced they are. Second interview. We had talked about a writing sample being collected before the second interview. I'll make a couple of suggestions on what I think those stems ought to be. It ought to be something clear that represents clearly communication skills, not their research skills, so oftentimes we do, I'm not going to say what the example is so that everybody can watch it on TV, but I'll send that to you in an email. You want to sample their communication skills, not their ability to do research on the district. The way we do the writing samples to ensure integrity is, is I make an appointment with each of your finalists and send them the writing stem, and they have one hour to complete it and one hour to send it back to me. So they don't, it minimizes the chance of any ghostwriting, not that we've ever had a problem like that, but just to ensure the integrity of the process. During that second, prior to that second interview, you may want to have the superintendent of the district meet with the candidate to respond to any questions. Many of them will contact him unilaterally on their own. They also will probably likely have toured the district in one way or another. We've had candidates go to the elementary school just to see how they're accepted and say, I'm thinking about moving here. And, which they are, and they like to do a little sampling of what's going on in the district and what people have to say. I had, we had a candidate that walked around the Kroger and just asked everybody they saw, so how do you feel about the Midland Public Schools? It wasn't Midland, but I'm putting this example, but people collect data in a lot of ways.
Not to be too anecdotal, but when we did the last search, when we did our site visit, I'll reverse that, we went to the local McDonald's and asked that question.
Yep.
For about an hour before the meeting.
I always like to find- I always like to find the barber shop and the, and the hair shop where everybody does their stuff, where all the opinions are formed very quickly. And then we had talked somewhere during that process about having a presentation by the candidate on some topic where board members could simply see what that is. Yeah. Just to, you know, pick a, we'll pick a topic and ask them to prepare a brief presentation so that you get a sample of their speaking skills. I believe we talked that you were going to have some kind of a district tour for the candidates on the second day, dinner with the board, a meeting with Cindy so she can decide who she likes the most? I'm just kidding. No, that's important. And then, and then you're going to enter the process of candidate selection, which, which should mirror the same process that you used previously.
And the way we have that scheduled now, and we can play it a little by ear, we have it scheduled now, if we want to, we can do it the night after the third, the last interview. Assume it's the third, we have it scheduled for that night. We've also reserved the next night. So if we're not, I'll call it in the mood to want to come back after all of this, which I, I will tell you best on pace history, we probably will not.
Right.
Want to come back after the third night of dinner and everything else, we'll probably take that fourth night for us to reconvene here in a public meeting and do the same thing we did in the first round after what we've learned.
I think that's a good idea to let things just sit for a night. You've got the, you're going to be able to do that and it, and this is, this is the point where you really want to make sure that you've all thought clearly through what it is. I will be there that night to facilitate that discussion if it would be helpful to And then that final phase, once you've decided on that candidate who you believe is the finalist, you haven't employed them yet, you've said this is, this is our person, is for each board member to do two reference checks. We will ask the candidate to supply 14 references across a, an entire range of areas. So you will talk to parents, teachers, board members, community members, and randomly assign those to each board member so that each of you can make two calls to the candidate's current community. And then you can share the results of those with each other by email, I assume, or calls or?
Dave, let me ask some questions about this part of the process.
Yes.
So we've gone through this and we have clearly articulated Sue is number one. I mean, obviously, we come out of that selection meeting. So now we're going to go do references on Sue. Let's assume those references come back and set off alarm bells and we go, uh-oh, you know, not so sure about Sue. How do we, how do we handle that? How do we do that? We have to do it in a public setting. So I have to do that in a public setting. Let's assume we decide that we don't want to pursue Sue and now we want to go pursue Joe. Is Joe still going to be inclined to want to come after he was told he was not number one?
It's an excellent question and what we try to do is preserve Joe for you. And, and, and I want to tell you, the way to avoid that is, it's going to triple your work, but you could do the reference checks on the front end.
At the front end, we'll reach down.
Where you each do six on all three. And that may clarify the decision-making.
And we would have a two-week period to do those six.
That's right, because there's a week built in there.
Extra week built in. And, and that's why I've asked this.
That heads that off.
Had this discussion.
That heads that off.
I would ask the board's preference. I mean, because it's extra work for each of us, but it could avoid the embarrassment. We will have the references in our hip pocket then when we're doing the final selection process versus doing a, uh-oh potentially. And then the two candidates said, never mind, if I'm not number one, why do I embarrass myself, come back? So what are you, I won't go around for head nods. Are you willing to do six reference checks in the two weeks between the first selection and the final selection?
I know one of the, one of the board presidents that I talked to when we were investigating search firms commented on how valuable that was to their process. So I think based on that, definitely beforehand would give us another data point.
And willing to do the extra calls.
Right.
Scott?
Yeah, I agree.
John?
I'm okay.
I would be willing to do that, yes.
Same, I'd be willing.
Great idea.
Got our answer. We're going to go, we're going to do six and we'll do it right after, beginning, right after the, the first cut, if you recall that. Okay, so that goes well and you've selected your number one candidate. Site visit involves as many board members as possible?
We have, we limited to three last time, not that we have to.
Oh, okay.
Not that we have to, but we were concerned about, what's this mean for open meetings if four of us go?
You got a point. Post it and go. Well, you can do that.
So would you.
Yeah. I don't think anybody's going to drive, well, you know, but, but you can. Some boards want everybody to go, most don't. But, you know, at this point, I got to tell you, it's going to be highly unlikely that anything goes wrong on this site visit, okay? This is just your final stage of due diligence. At this point, you've, you've emotionally committed yourself to a candidate and the candidates emotionally committed themselves to you. So the candidates make sure these meetings go pretty well.
Yeah, and I will tell you from Lynn was on the lap, Lynn went, didn't you? And I think it was Lee. It, it serves to make you feel good that you reconfirmed all the reasons why, okay? You typically, I heard better than I thought from the interviews when we did the site visit. I would, to your point, Dave, I don't expect it to get worse.
Yeah.
But it's a reconfirmation.
Okay.
And it's going to be a function, we've set a date for it. The candidate will be available that date by definition. And we've set two dates because if it's something local, we could do it relatively fast. If it's something that's more remote and requires a day's worth of travel to get there, then we've reserved a day for travel and a day for the, the site visit. So once we know who the candidate is, we can then say, who wants to go and figure out how to get there. But doing that ahead of time is more wishy-washy depending on which day we go and the travel involved.
And we generally give the candidate general guidelines for that visit, the amount of time and let them set it up so that you can see what, who they chose for you to see. And, and the, and the quality that went into the, setting up the visit. Contract. I think you've already begun this process, but you need to be ready with your contract by the round of the first interviews. We're going to, I'm going to work with President Wasserman and getting you comparable districts so that you have a notion of compensation. Ballpark, we're going to do our level best to not bring you any candidate you can't afford so that we don't have that situation come up. You should all know what's in the basic scaffolding of the contract well before you select the final candidate and have agreement on that among yourselves as to the basic provisions. The board president usually negotiates the contract with the candidate within the constraints that have been established with the board. So there'll be a maximum salary, a maximum benefit package. Don't be surprised and don't be offended if the candidate tries to negotiate for more salary or benefits. This is their only chance in this environment. Go to any superintendent's conference and there'll be five sessions on, get it in the first contract because you're not going to get it in any subsequent contracts. So expect them to do that. Expect them to have counsel review it, their counsel at their expense. But that's a standard part of the process that they do and it's, it's a good idea. Protects you and it protects them. And that is how the process will work in a nutshell. There are, of course, a lot of small steps within each one of those, but that's what you're facing over the next month or so.
And Dave, can, to expedite the next steps while you're here, I've sketched out while you were talking, a proposed timing process for the interview questions. That's the first question at hand. The next question at hand is I'll go off with Dave, one-on-one, and discuss how we begin a process on the contract. That's another one we have to do parallel to all of this, so we're prepared. But I'm looking for your feedback. I'm just sketching something down that meets our timelines and gives us some time to get things done. If, we will get in your hands tomorrow, all these slides, so that you can see, if you don't have them already, we got to send them out. We can send them out.
I sent them off.
That's what I thought. They're in everybody's hands. Go through and look at what the community and we as board has said we want for the superintendent. And formulate your first pass questions you'd want to ask, if you would, and get them back to me by Sunday, April 21st. Okay, so that'd be a week. You get them to me by Sunday, April 21st, I'll be forwarding them on to Dave. I'll have Dave, or Dave and I, whichever way he wants to handle it, to consolidate the questions. There'll be many that are the same or nearly the same. We'll consolidate those down and then also look at what people have said, the community and we've said ourselves, we want for attributes and look if there's any holes. It could very well, we all asked the same question on this and don't ask the question about that. And, and we'll come back, say this hole is there and we propose these questions to fill that hole. I would commit to getting that done by the next Friday.
Okay.
Okay, so we have the work week through April 26th to have that done and get back to you on that next weekend then.
Okay.
And so you'd have a list of questions.
The only part we need to build in there, Jerry, is about three or four days for our human resources expert, Larry, to take, once the questions are finalized, we'll build a process of building rubrics on each of those questions and give you look fours. We call them look fours. And it's, look for the following theme or example in an answer to this question. If it's present, it means the person knows what they're talking about.
Okay.
It's up to you to judge tone and that type of thing, but we'll give you some ways to, it's not precise, but you, basically, it gives you a way to score answers.
If you have that by April 26th for a May 6th, 7th, and 8th interview.
Oh, easy, easy, easy.
Okay. Because then, then what, we'll go back to you by, we'll identify the holes and come back to you with a, I'll call it, consolidate a list of questions based on what you all input. Then I'd give you several days, because you wouldn't need eternity at that point, to say, yeah, but you still missed this and/or I'd like to add that and, and get us back. And then by, by about the middle of that week, the Wednesday, which would be about the May 1st timeframe, hand to Dave, final questions, and then he would do his rubric thing and come back. Does that meet your needs to be?
Yes.
So if we follow that, it'd be like, end of this week on first pass, we'd take five days to get you second pass back. You'd have a few days then to comment back to us on what's missing or what you'd like to have rephrased. And then we would be done formulating the questions. And then the only question is parsing them up. And what I might do is just call you and say, which two are your favorite that you'd like to ask and give them to you? Or just email you, say, what are the two? Like, I don't have to worry about open meeting on asking your preference on the question you asked.
And, and Mr., the only thing I'd add to that is, is during the interview process, Mr. Wasserman has the unpopular task of, if there's too many probing questions asked or too many follow-ups, he's going to have to move the, move it along. If the candidate's wandering about, let that go on a bit longer because it tells you something about the way they communicate.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Betty.
Do you provide an opportunity for the candidate to ask the board in?
Yes. At the conclusion of the interview, we asked, we tried to set aside 10 minutes for the candidate to ask questions of board members. And then at the final part of that, Mr. Wasserman will ask the candidate to present some kind of a closing statement.
So the board needs to be prepared for the questions they may be asked.
Yes.
And we never know what they're going to be. So I guess we're prepared.
And do we handle that? That it's always directed to you initially or how is that?
If the candidate asks an individual board member, I'd let that board member answer it. Because it could be like a follow-up to something asked earlier. If it's a generic question, I will tend to ask, would somebody care to answer that?
Okay.
Okay? And look, if someone's eager to or everybody kind of goes like one of these, then I'll handle it. But we'll play that by ear based on how the question's asked. If it smells awful lot like one of your two that you asked, but he hasn't addressed it to you, I may come back and ask you to answer it because it was in line with the two questions you asked. I think quick on my feet to do that.
I expect that the questions will be asked to the entire board in expectation to, it's pretty unlikely a candidate would put a single board member on the spot.
Yeah. And I'll tend to dole it out. The reason I'll dole it out is when we get to the final, you know, final candidate and we're in negotiations, while I didn't want to learn a lot about the person, it's too late. I mean, we will have learned, but he'll have plenty of interaction with me as the future board president during the negotiating process. And what I want him to do is get as much interaction with you as individual board members before that. Which is why I will tend to push that off to you if I can. If you're uncomfortable, you know, I may, I'll probably do something like, Angelo, would you prefer to question, answer that question? And you can easily say, no, Jerry, I'd prefer you or another board member answer that question. That's fine. That's not embarrassing.
If, a little bit on contract negotiation. Some boards will ask us to get involved in the negotiations process with the candidate. The, the reason we recommend that that not be done is it gets in the way of clear communication. This is the beginning of the employment relationship between the board and the candidate and we think it's important that that go on between the two of them. And that, that also applies to this lawyer thing. The one, the board uses its attorney as they see fit. We tell the candidates, you can get a legal review, but don't get the lawyer involved in negotiating your contract with the board. That's, it can be the kiss of death because, all apologies to any lawyers on the board or in the audience, sometimes the lawyers will get really interested in a very small part of the contract that doesn't mean anything in the big picture. And we don't want that to become a point of contention. So we always tell the candidates, you continue to keep your communication open with the board president.
And from an Open Meetings Act perspective, I'm allowed to go to each of you individually and ask your opinion and ask for your input on a particular thing. Okay, so if there are five issues, I can say, what do you think about this issue, that issue, that issue? Thank you. And I can go to the next candidate and ask that, or next board member and ask that same question. What I can't do is tell board member two what board member one told me, okay? So you can bet, this gets into a lot of phone calls real fast in terms of this negotiation as it, as it moves along potentially. Because I got to touch six bases on every issue that comes up to make sure I've really got a board consensus. I'm the only one that will know what that board consensus was because it's not a board consensus, it's a collection of individual thoughts.
But can we help that along by setting some pretty good parameters?
We will do that. We will do that long before. There will be, I will know the boundaries.
Right.
Long before I get there. And that's what Dave and I will talk about is how do we, what do we put out there? I'm looking for his advice. I got the current contract and we'll sit there and go, okay, if we model it after the current contract, what are the boundaries? And then I'll also be asking Dave with his expertise, what's missing in this thing or what needs to be deleted from this thing based on, on past practice.
Questions?
Nope, so, okay, so April 21st, you have your assignment, it's in your emails already on that presentation. April 21st, I'll be hounding you for what your questions will be based on that. Please don't try to give me 100 because that'll be impossible, but if each of you can come with like, come with six, okay? That would be 42 different questions. There'll be many duplicative, that's fine, but if you come with six, we can sort through that. That'd be almost 50 we sort through.
My, I guess my question at this point and then, and then we can conclude is, do you have any questions? Do you feel fairly well-prepared for this first step of the process? Understand the constraints? I, I certainly don't feel the need to go over them with you, but please carefully review at the end of the questions, the illegal questions that you may not ask. If a candidate brings up their family, you're free to ask them questions about it, but you can't ask them about their family to start with. Marital status, anything else.
And, and I just think you're packing, I have a ready kit, will guide us. What are we allowed to ask and not ask? You saw the community feedback, you've heard board expectations. We expect this, we expect this person to be part of our community. Part and parcel and well-integrated in our community. I know I can't ask, are you willing to move here? Or can I? What am I allowed to legally ask about being?
Look at the, the final, there's a big box at the end of the sample questions that says, do not ask any of these questions. That is the basic parameters of things that you may not ask a candidate. And, but other things like, are you, would you be willing to move to Midland is, is fair game. You know, how, how much, how visible will you be in the community? Give us some concrete examples. How many nights a week are you willing to work? I mean, this, this is, you're, you have broad.
Yeah, those are, no.
Things over those. It's just, it, it's basically. It's just, it, it's basically the, the standard illegal questions that probably most of you are aware of that you cannot ask, but if the candidate brings them up, then it's fair game. Okay? And, and you may just want your district's attorney to look and see if I've captured all of them there. I believe I have, but sometimes they'll have an additional piece of advice for the board, so you may just want to have them take a quick glance at them.
I will do that. Any other questions or concerns?
None.
Is there an item for action or is that just us setting up our, our timeline?
It's, it's just basically, no, we don't need a motion.
It's a to-do list.
It's a to-do list.
Yeah, okay, all right, gotcha.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a motion. So, the first step is, please by Sunday, go through that stuff and ask me your questions, review the not-asked questions and formulating them, and, and give me up to, doesn't have to be six, but give me up to six, based on what you think are the key questions.
Yep, yep.
Okay, that's it? Anything else we need, Dave?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the fun now begins. I think that's all we have to do for this evening, if not mistaken. Anything else for the good of the order from anybody? Seeing none, we stand adjourned.